If we could have council members come to the dais, please. Thank you.
I just go, my thing is, why do we have the Disneyland?
Because they took the doors.
Yeah.
And we don't want people just to feel.
Were we naughty or were we in timeout? Or why did we?
They're supposed to be fixed.
You're about to be in timeout. We're going to circle you around with some of those.
Are you ready? I'd like to call to order the council meeting of June 26th. Now if the clerk could please call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
All right, here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza, is he?
He's absent.
Okay.
He has an excused absence.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to be noticed at this time? Councilmember Brown.
A great pillar to the Lansing community, Lucius Pops Jackson passed away. So just to recognize him and the family and all of his great work. He was just a mentor to so many throughout Lansing and we could go on forever.
Thank you.
So keep him in our thoughts and prayers.
All right. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, if we could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have proceedings tonight, so we are to special ceremonies and presentation. We have reaffirming the appointments of councilmembers Garza and Jackson to the Lansing Planning Commission Liaison position.
Thank you. As part of the charter, the 5.5-601.3 says that regular members of the planning board, the council shall nominate and appoint two council members who serve as ex-official members of the board without a vote for one-year terms commencing on July 1st. So this is just reaffirming those that were appointed in January. So with that, I read that into the record and they are still serving as the two ex-official members. Thank you.
That takes us to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Comments by councilmembers. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just really quickly, thank you to everybody who came to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. We had a good time, good conversation. I am going to cancel our July constituent contact meeting as I plan to be traveling with the family and I look forward to seeing you in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmember? Yes, Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Just real quick, First Ward will not be having a constituent contact meeting for July. The weather is just too nice right now, so I'm not going to drag anyone inside to listen to me talk for two hours. So, thank you.
Was that a motion to adjourn then? Oh, it sounded like it was adjournment there.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
It's because of the Fourth of July weekend.
Okay. Councilmember Hussein.
And we will also not be having a Third Ward constituent contact meeting in July. We have historically always recessed for July and December. And that was kind of a decision back in 2017 that was arrived at by the group that consistently comes and kind of meets to discuss issues throughout southwest Lansing. So in any event, we will not have a meeting in July, but we should be back at it in August. I wanted to take an opportunity very quickly. I wanted to thank Tierston Walters. Tierston is an at-large park board member and, you know, he goes above and beyond at all times. Now, the guy is, you know, not just at the meetings, but he's always well-versed when he's at the meetings, asks great questions, is out at just about every neighborhood meeting, gathering I'm at. But then he actually engaged me, said, you know, Adam, I'd really like to get to know, you know, the issues in southwest Lansing in terms of the parks. And so we spent a considerable amount of time out at the parks recently. And we visited parks such as Graves Park, we visited Rizdale Park, we visited Fulton Park, we visited Ingham Park, the list goes on. And it was, you know, we saw really, and I put a Facebook post up regarding this, we really saw the good, the bad, and the ugly. And we saw playgrounds that were in good repair, playgrounds that weren't in good repair. We saw playgrounds where there was quite a bit of community conversation in terms of what would actually be assembled and positioned into that playground. And then we saw playgrounds where there was no community input. And so there's quite a bit of frustration in those respective neighborhoods at this point. We saw parking lots that were in good repair, parking lots that were in disrepair, and the list goes on. And so in any event, not only was I incredibly impressed with his service to our community through that particular medium, but the follow-up has been tremendous. He immediately got to work. He's been advocating on our behalf with the Parks Director, with some of our frontline employees within the Parks Department, with his own colleagues on the Park Board. So I just really wanted to recognize him and his service with regard to that particular board and to our community. Then I also want to thank a couple of our city workers. Irene Cahill, Brett Kacinski, as well as Jesse Fontaine, all with parks and public services. They bent over backwards to make sure that Churchill Downs had a fantastic picnic last week. And of course, I want to thank the executive board of the Churchill Downs neighborhood, particularly the picnic committee chairs, Israel DeGruy and Denise King. They were just, I mean, it was a tremendous celebration of community. But those three individuals that I referenced earlier, they answered calls at night, they, you know, picked up the phone over the weekend to ensure that the park was well-maintained, that there were receptacles out there, that the fields had been sprayed for bugs, I mean, just above and beyond. And so I wanted to thank them as well. Thank you.
And on behalf of rejuvenating South Lansing, because the parking lot at the Alfreda Smith Community Center is being, they started today in repaving, that particular meeting that is normally would be tomorrow has been canceled because of parking limitations. So there is no RSL or rejuvenating South Lansing meeting tomorrow. Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood, for the opportunity to speak. I would like to take a few minutes to address the ethics complaints that were filed against me and referred to City Council from the Ethics Board. I take full responsibility for any mistakes that I've made relating to these complaints. Please know that my mistakes have been unintentional. I take full accountability and will go through any training that you as a council body believe would help me be more effective council member. I am at the full mercy of this council and I am willing to follow any remedy that you see fit. I am willing to step down from committees this year if council believes that's necessary. I know that I belong to this body and I'm truly sorry if anything I've done has brought any shame to the body. I take my elected role very seriously and decided to run for City Council because I believe I can make a difference in the community where I was born and raised, and I'm extremely grateful to be here. Being raised in Lansing in our diverse community, serving the most vulnerable population is very near to my heart. When our community is struggling, it hurts me to see that. But I want to make it clear, I love the privilege the people of Lansing have given to me and I'm fully committed to moving forward to being the best council member that I can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other councilmember comments? Seeing none.
Thank you, President Wood. A couple election-related notes. We are approaching the time when absentee ballots will be available for our August 8th primary election. So beginning this Thursday, both City Hall location as well as South Washington, 2500 South Washington, we will have ballots available for walk-in absentee voting. And for those of you, we have about 7,000, 6,000, 7,000 people who have requested a ballot by mail, so those will be put in the mail on Thursday as well. So if you're one of those folks that requested a ballot, you should see that over the weekend. Again, to return that ballot, we do have 14 drop boxes throughout the city, or you can return it by postage-paid envelope. Now in our constitution, both the absentee ballot application as well as the ballot itself, the constitution requires that the state of Michigan provide the funding for those ballots to be returned. So forevermore, those will be postage-paid envelopes. So please, please vote. And I encourage you, if you, we did mail out over 30,000 applications, so there's oh, 20-some thousand people who have one in their hand that haven't returned it yet. So give that back to us so we can mail you a ballot. You also have the opportunity when filling out that application to sign up for a, to be a permanent mail ballot voter. And what that means is that instead of having to fill out an application for future elections, you would just automatically, we would mail you a ballot about 40 days before the election. So it's really streamlining the process. And not for the August election, but for future elections, we will have true early voting in Michigan for the first time in Michigan history. You'll be able to, there will be at least nine days where you can put a ballot into a tabulator, but that will be coming for the November election and beyond. So I look forward to providing more details about that. I also want to take a moment and thank the Michigan Legislature. They're heavily in action and working on the legislation that will implement some of these things that were envisioned in the 2022 proposal to constitutional amendment that was so widely approved by Lansing and Michigan voters. So we expect those to be passed the House and Senate yet this week and hopefully signed very soon by Governor Whitmer. So looking forward to lots of election changes coming and we will do our best to make sure that everyone stays informed on what all of your new voting rights are. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Okay, so as a candidate for Lansing City Council, I feel it is my duty to announce that the Lansing League of Women Voters will be hosting a meet and greet or candidate form for Lansing City Council candidates on Thursday, June 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the South Washington Office Complex. Note that I am not affiliated with the League of Women Voters as they are not affiliated with any candidate as they cannot endorse or oppose any candidates. And candidates, of course, have to arrive by around 6:15 p.m., give or take. And so I hope to see other candidates and the members of the public there.
Thank you.
I hope people sees me.
And are there other community event announcements?
Well, we're finally into some good weather and it's picnic season, so where else should you have a picnic but where the first parks were are cemeteries. So the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries will be holding an annual picnic this year on July 16th at 11:00 a.m. in the Fratcher Memorial Garden inside Mount Hope Cemetery. You can either avail yourselves of the subs and chips and cookies and bottled waters and pops that we'll provide, or you can bring your own picnic. So join us for a picnic in the cemetery on July 16th, Sunday, at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, other community events. All right, seeing none, I will announce that we are closing in about 30 seconds to sign up for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters does tonight include items 3 through 19, I'm sorry, 3 through 24 on the printed agenda. We'll give you about another half a minute to grab grace in the back if you haven't already. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
Thank you, Madam President. Variety of thank yous. First, our congratulations. I want to congratulate our fire science graduates. We had several of our youth graduate the fire science program in conjunction with the school district. So that was a great, great day to see so many students graduating. I want to congratulate all the wonderful folks who were involved in Juneteenth events. We had a great parade and kickoff, well, at first a great kickoff the Thursday night before and a great parade, and then St. Joe Park. It was incredible. The food was great, the music was great, and then the event in Ryo Town later that afternoon. And at the same day, we had upwards of 10,000 people for Pride in Old Town. So we had a ton of people in the city, all having a great time. I also wanted to thank Churchill Downs. They did a wonderful job with their picnic. Certainly, it was great to see all the neighbors out and smiling and talking. I want to thank the Tom and Loopy Izzo family who have opened, or at least put their name on, opening the Izzo Family Medical Center, which is at the McLaren Hospital in southeast Lansing, along with Pat Gillespie, along with McLaren, and a variety of others. I wanted to congratulate our human relations and community service for their celebration of diversity, which was wonderful. I wanted to thank everybody involved today with our Black History Mobile Museum and Presidential Awards. Thank you to Dr. Ali, Dr. El Hakim, Professor Griff of Public Enemy, Luciana Solis in my office, and many, many others. Christine and Larry Johnson were there. And I want to congratulate the award winners, Nino Rodriguez, Michael McKissick, Patty Farhat, Carmen Benavides, Mayor Ron Bacon, and I was honored to receive an award, which was, which is an honor. I want to remind everybody that we've got some speed signs that have gone up in the neighborhoods, so the next steps of Operation Slow Down, I hope everybody will see these signs, realize they're going a little fast and slow down. I've seen about, I don't know, 10 of them or so driving around, but we should have 15 to 20 up, five per ward, and then another five as needed. So I'm hopeful that that will slow people down. Certainly, we will match enforcement where necessary, but this isn't about money, this is about safety. So we hope people will see these signs and slow down. On Wednesday is the groundbreaking for the Ovation, our Concert Hall Performing Arts Center. We have a few special guests and a few surprises, so I hope folks will join us. I'm very excited. And then we've got Frog and the Beef Tones at the concert in the park this Wednesday. We've got a great parade coming for the Fourth of July, and then a concert in the park that night, and there's a Lugnuts game. And then on Friday the 7th and Saturday the 8th, we have Damn Jam. So lots going on in the city of Lansing over the summer and hope to see you all at all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that is items 3 through 19. Item 3 is a public hearing, so I'll read that into the record. An ordinance to clarify solid waste recyclable material and/or yard waste abatement and enforcement penalties.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, so this simply deals with the enforceability of our ordinances to abate, mitigate the trash bins, the nuisance aspect of it, the public safety aspect of it, with the bins sitting essentially at the curbs day in and day out. And so what this actually does is allows us to, independent of the abatement provision or the actual collection of the bins, to actually issue civil infractions. And then it sets the fees, or I should say, the fines per calendar year. The first offense would be $25, the second offense per calendar year would be 50, and the third or any subsequent offense would be $250. We will also be taking a look at this later, later on tonight for final consideration due to the fact that we have been looking at this for north of five years now. Thank you.
Okay, the first speaker, well, first I will acknowledge written communication from Jennifer Quenby regarding 3517 Pleasant Grove Road, and I believe that was also, she emailed that directly to councilmembers earlier tonight. And our first speaker is Darren Toos, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Did you not also have a email from Elaine?
You are right. It was in the folder. Thank you.
Not a problem.
We have written communication from Elaine Wamboldt supporting the passage of the corrections to 1237, the ordinance that is up for public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Toos, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak about the six vacant lots in the right-of-way off Frederick Street in the north side of Lansing. Currently, I own a two-acre parcel that both buildings in my office sit on next to the property. The six vacant lots I'm referring to is directly behind my current property that run parallel with the right-of-way. This is our 21st year in business and each and every year it's been with the city of Lansing. Each year, our company grows. Vehicles, employees, equipment, and store materials are one of the biggest things we have going on. I started my company 21 years ago by myself, one truck, and a couple pieces of equipment. Now we have well over 20 trucks, 35-plus employees, multiple pieces of equipment, and need for storage. We have several multiple contracts with the city of Lansing, which we are very excited about. We'll be providing all the temporary fencing for this year's fireworks display. We had just been awarded the new contract for the board-up services at Lansing to help with a large amount of the red-tagged homes. And there are multiple building sites in the city that our fencing is located. Pro Soil and the city of Lansing have been working together for over 20,000 years now, together like partners. When our company grows, the amount of taxes that we pay to the city grows also. I stand here proud to say that I pay my taxes and we have no tax burden against any of my companies that are here in the city of Lansing. When the marijuana licenses passed, it brought in many different new companies and all the older buildings with warehouse space were scooped up very quickly. Those buildings that were for sale were way over our means, so we decided to stay where we are at. I'm not looking to move out of the city. I want to grow more with the city. There is a long list of the many employees we've dealt with over the years that worked for the city of Lansing, and the ones that we currently work for or have in the past that gives us great pride. Allowing to have this right-of-way abandoned will give all the property owners that butt up to it an additional 25 feet of the 50-foot right-of-way. Trips Collision, who is a longstanding company as well, would love an extra 25 feet for their new facility on Northeast Street, along with Autozone and Pro Soil. The six vacant lots will help our company grow even further if they can be rezoned to the suburban commercial. I will be working on a ground, or on a green break around the perimeter of the fence for the homeowners to provide them the privacy they want and the privacy they need. The more our company grows, the more the city grows. It's a partnership that both reap positive benefits for the city and the future of the city. I want to see Lansing grow, and I want to be part of that growth also. The city is changing each year, and so is our company. We are here to ask that all councilmembers help share a positive outlook on our future in partnership with the city of Lansing for allowing these six vacant lots to be rezoned to help us expand all of our companies.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Stan Shuck.
So I'm here to speak about the Moores Park repairs that the state government has now officially approved. All I'm going to say about this, what I'm going to say about this issue is that it should have been done as soon as 2019 happened, and it was in disrepair for years, and it is in desperate need of renovation. And while I do support the refurbishment of the Moores Park pool and the restoration, it should have been, definitely should have been done earlier, and it's almost about time that it actually happened. And it honestly, for such a historical pool like that to go into such disrepair just shows the negligence that our city has had for our people, especially for our parks in Moores Park. And because of that, we seriously need to, well, thanks for the extra time, but the point is, that I'm trying to say is that pools, that pool is very historical, and the fact that it's been neglected for so many years just angers me to no end. And while I'm glad that something's being done right now, it should have been done earlier. That's all I need to say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Stan Shuck, followed by Mitch Rice.
Good evening, Stan Shuck. I'd just like to say I support, you know, redoing the pool wholeheartedly. But one thing I got to worry about is how the pool got to where it is. And you all know where that's going. It's purely a lack of maintenance, like this building, like Fire Station 9, you know, like SWAC. You know, I went down there one day with SWAC and took pictures of it. It was raining harder inside than it was outside, and put it on Facebook. That's purely due to a lack of maintenance people, you know, trying to contract everything out, no maintenance people on staff. And, you know, you call Eifert or somebody else when you spring a leak, that obviously doesn't, doesn't work for anybody, especially the properties and the taxpayers that support it. I want to get into that refuse recycle. We got to have one of the worst recycling programs in the country. I guarantee it's got to be the worst in the state of Michigan anyway. You can't recycle anything. Every commercial is about what you can't, what you can't recycle. You know, the whole thing stems from, we were going to build a MRF station, you know, and then to appease political cronies, we sold the central garage and turned the MRF station into the new garage. It was supposed to be a fire suppression repair facility for the entire Midwest, and that didn't happen. You know, it's just one, one shell game after another with this, with this whole recycling deal. And the fee, you know, I still, I'd like to know where I can see the exact breakdown of what that fee covers, because once again, you just raised it and you're cutting the services. You haven't hired the employees, you haven't hired them for years and years. We're almost to July, so maybe we'll get some in July. But that money shouldn't be used in any other way whatsoever. So, you know, if anybody, you know, I've asked and asked, where is that breakdown? The fee is based on the cost. There's not supposed to be a profit there. It's based on the cost of all these things that go into it. Where can we, where can the public see those costs and break that down? Because if you're not going to provide the services, you need to reassess the cost to the services that you are providing, not things that you want to provide, but the things that you actually are providing and have been providing. One of those is sweepmen. We're down to one sweeper again. They had the one that was in an accident had to go back to the company to be rebuilt. So I don't know how you're supposed to meet your obligations that the fee pays for. But if anybody can give me any insight on where exactly we can see that fee break down and what it goes for, that'd be great, because we need a real recycling system in this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker for this portion is Mitch Rice.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and councilmembers. Mitch Rice, South Lansing, the southeast side of South Lansing. That was for Adam, because it's southwest. Item, Agenda number seven, just a comment. I was pleased to see that the city of Lansing has a grant working with community corrections. I have one suggestion for future grant requests, that the funding of the special part-time, 19-hours-per-week pre-trial services investigator position at the ICEAPR006 salary grade not to exceed $26,197. As an experienced mental health and substance use professional counselor myself, the current salary is low. I understand you can't do anything about it because it was approving that, but to attract more experienced staff, the salary should be higher. The current salary is about $28 an hour. I suggest at least 35 an hour for a total part-time salary in the future of $31,920. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we are to the referral of the public hearing item number three.
Uh, that will be taken up later this evening.
Then we are to the consent agenda.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. As I understand it, we have four items on the consent agenda tonight. Uh, the first is a setting of a public hearing on a, uh, special assessment for snow and ice removal winter of 2022, 2023. The second is a setting of a public hearing, I'm sorry, that would be July 10th. Second is a setting of a public hearing on, uh, noise special permit for Levitt Stark excavating ink to conduct work as part of the CSO 15 South Project, again, on July 10th. Uh, another, uh, I'm sorry, we have a resolution for grant acceptance from MI Core Volunteer Stream Cleanup Program, also known as VSCP, grant for the Parks and Recreation Department. And lastly, we have a resolution for grant application, uh, to the State of Michigan Office of Community Corrections funding application for the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board. With that, I would move the consent agenda.
And motion on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. Items eight through 10 are claim appeals.
Uh, councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'll move item number eight to claim, uh, Claim 1951 to deny $360 in grass fees at 2306 East Michigan Avenue. Um, the property was cited for grass violation on September 20th, 2022, with a compliance due date of the 27th. The officer rechecked the property on the 10th of October, which is, uh, 13 days after the compliance due date. The property was still in violation. It was then submitted to the contractor to abate. The contractor arrived on the 24th, nearly a month after the citation due date, and the property was still in violation. The contractor moved along, and we whipped the property. Uh, that, we do recommend denial of the claim.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I move item number nine. It is claim number 1958, denial of $7,190 in trash fees at 1017 North Large Street. This property was cited for trash violation on the 12th of April, 2022, with a compliance due date of the 19th of that month. The premise officer returned on the 25th of April, six days after the compliance due date, to find the property still in violation. The director of EDMP coordinated the cleanup with Public Service Department to clean the property. Public service estimated on 5/23, nearly a month after compliance due date, that they have moved 80 to 100 yards of debris from the property. The property owner is responsible for restricting access to the property, ensuring the property is kept in a clean manner. Um, the basis for the claim was they attested it was not their trash, but other folks' trash. Um, the trash was there, was removed, so we recommend denial.
Okay. Um, and with that, we have a motion. All those in favor say, or any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, the next item is item number, uh, claim number 1970. I move for the denial of, uh, claim in the amount of $7,558 in trash fees at 3517 Pleasant Grove Road. The property was cited for trash violation on, uh, September 14th, 2022, with the compliance due date of September 21st. The officer returned on the 22nd. Uh, multiple violations were present. They were submitted to the contractor for removal. The contractor arrived on the 28th, found multiple violations, and then they were, again, removed. Um, you'll read in the co, in the notes and some public, uh, input that, um, the address for notification was, was improper. Uh, we did go back and check the addresses. Um, the property was sold in 2011 to the listed names on the notification. There was a failure to deliver to a previous address, and at the request of the owner, it was changed to an address in Mason, and that was the address at which all notifications were sent. Um, in December of '22, three months after this violation occurred, um, one of the owners requested that the address on file with the city for owner information be changed back to the property in question. So that's where there's a little bit of confusion about the notification, but if you look at the, the paper trail with the city, the notifications were sent properly. Therefore, we remove, we move for the denial of this claim.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any ques, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Council, no.
We are to item 11, uh, the budget amendments.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So this, uh, resolution pertains to fiscal year end 2022, 2023, and fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget amendments. Um, as to not, uh, further confuse the body after what was a confusing, if not, uh, maddening conversation during Committee of the Whole, um, I'm gonna move this. So this is, uh, in front of the body for discussion, and then I believe President Wood is going to give us a very concise rundown of what to say.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. We do have a motion. Um, the, uh, resolution that we have in front of us, the, uh, first part of the resolution deals with the opiate settlement. Those are revenues that are, um, coming in. Um, those are going to be dispersed evenly between police, fire department, and HRCS. We then have, um, funding that was not utilized in fiscal year 2022 from the HRCS, um, department. Those funds will be carried forward, but for them to be utilized, will have to come back to council for an appropriation. Then we have, um, the personnel funding, which came from, um, 2023, that are part of, uh, the vacancy factor, and those, um, dollars are allocated, um, out, um, and going into, uh, various accounts as well as the fund balance. Then lastly, we have for a 2324 fiscal year, $15,000, uh, coming from current council accounts that will be carried forward to fill in some of the, uh, places where there were, um, cuts taken, uh, to council members', um, uh, office holder accounts, to, um, the community promotions as well, um, as, um, the community funding. Um, so with that, that's the resolution that we have in front of us. Are there any questions? Councilmember, um, Jackson.
Thank you. Not so much a question as, as a comment, and it's basically doing with the underutilized funds from HRCS. I spoke about it in Committee of the Whole. And basically, out of the whole budget, all the departments, all the line items in all of the departments, besides the vacancy report and whatever else there was, there was unused money for the racial justice and equity. And this was council's money as far as our response to the crisis of 2020, 2021, and declaring racism a public health crisis. And what we were able to do is find some money to go towards that. And that was back in 2021. This money wasn't used. The .01% that we allocated of the budget to go to this wasn't used in '22. And basically, now, the plan is to make a plan to decide how to use it moving forward. Um, my thing is, is that we need to use it. We need to figure it out. We have MSU, a research institution. We have so many resources to figure out what we need to do, what we can do, and the fact that it's not getting used bothers me. So I look forward to hearing the plan about, um, what we're gonna do. But there, I went, I went through it in Committee of the Whole. I'm not gonna do it now. There are so many things that we could do. There's so many areas that we could touch, so it's kind of disheartening that the plan is to make a plan. We should have already, back in '22, tried to make the plan, because now the plan is to use the money, again, to contract an outside agency to make a plan, to figure out what we need. But it's just taking too long, because this money was allocated a long time ago, and there hasn't been action yet. We did hear in Committee of the Whole that there may be action coming, and I look forward to hearing about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I would just say, um, and, and to the mayor, I think, um, it was, uh, made abundantly clear here on the dais, uh, during Committee of the Whole. Um, we understand that there are some things that we need to do studies on and things like that. We're looking for action. So we hope as you are working with the department, we come, you come back to us for this appropriation, that we actually see some action moving forward, um, with that. So having said that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, Adam, 12 is the local development finance authority budget.
Now, back to councilmember Spatafor.
Councilmember Cost promised not two hours of him, so it's gonna be two hours of me tonight, so. Uh, before us is a resolution approving the Lansing development, the local development finance authorities FY 2324 budget. I would move the resolution and note it's basically pro forma at this point, as the Lansing tax capture is exactly $0 on the TIF, so it's going, uh, completely out of the East Lansing tax capture. We, so we are approving the budget, but it has no impact or expense from Lansing taxpayers.
Okay, with that, all those in, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Um, councilmember Spatafor.
Uh, this is a noise special permit for ET McKenzie Company, requesting them to allow combined sewer flow, um, separation work in the 034E project on Green Lawn Avenue. It's a triangle-shaped property that is, uh, shaped by South Washington, uh, West Green Lawn, and on the, uh, we're on the south side. Um, let me make sure I get it right, southeast side. Um, and it's a project for two years. Um, they're asking for extensions, uh, from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM on Saturdays, um, knowing they won't use Saturdays as on a regular basis. They're hoping to plan for, uh, weather events and unexpected, um, um, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Uh, but we heard a hearing last week. They've been in committee twice, and this is part of our mandated consent agreement for the CSO separation project, so therefore I move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the resolution. All those, um, in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Uh, that takes us to, excuse me, to councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, um, this is, sorry, this pertains to orders to make, save, or demolish to the owners of property located at 3421 North Cedar Street. You might, uh, recall that we did have a show cause hearing, uh, on June 12th. Uh, so this is actually before the body for final consideration tonight. Uh, this is a fire damaged property, so again, for your consideration tonight, is a 30-day, uh, make, save, or demolish. Our understanding is that no permits, uh, have been pulled. Um, the, and this was actually submitted in the demo, uh, way back in 2020, so there was some effort, uh, to work with the property owner. Uh, unfortunately, uh, those efforts stalled out. Uh, so with that being said, I would move the, uh, resolution.
All right, we have, um, motion before us and resolution for 30 days make, save. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
All right. Uh, the next resolution pertains to orders to make, save, or demolish to the owners of property located at 131 Jackson Street. Again, we did have a show cause hearing on June 12th. Uh, we did not have anybody appear. Uh, my understanding, going all the way back to, uh, the demo boards process, there's been little to, uh, to no contact with the, uh, registered agent, which in this case is a Robert Stone. Uh, the property was initially put into demo, uh, again, back in 2020, um, and, and I think I already said, but I'll say it again, uh, is this is not a fire damaged property. For consideration tonight, is a 60-day make, save, or demolish. So with that being said, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, we have a resolution before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
All right, so the, uh, last make, save, or demolish, uh, order is for the property at 1722 DeNora Street. Uh, we did have a show cause hearing on June 12th. Um, as with the other two, um, there has been really no contact with the owner. Uh, there was a roofing permit, uh, that was pulled, uh, at some point, but that expired, uh, back in 2019, and no other permits have been pulled, uh, since. Um, again, as this is not a fire damaged property, this will, uh, be a 60-day make, save, or demolish if approved by this body. With that being said, I move the resolution.
And motion on the resolution, and can you remind us how long that that's been?
Oh, I'm sorry. This one, uh, was originally red-tagged back in 2006. Uh, it was not submitted in the demo, uh, until early 2023, but, uh, with the SEB, uh, being $26,000 in the estimated cost of repairs at $91,000, we know that it was, uh, it qualified for the process long before, uh, early this year.
Okay, um, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. And we have Betty Drayer that is applauding in heaven right now, so. Okay, Mr. Cost.
See, Councilman Spatafor spoke a little too soon. Um, I have a resolution, um, to support, um, the Michigan State Legislature passing, um, the budget that includes appropriations for the Moores Park Pool, which is, um, our, uh, prototype bins pool here in Lansing. I believe it's one of five left that are, um, still standing, that can be, um, uh, used. Um, so, um, with that, I would move this resolution forward.
We have a motion before us, um, for the Moores Park. Yes, councilmember Spatafor.
I said this in Committee of the Whole, but I wanna say it again. Um, I really appreciate you bringing this resolution forward. It brings, uh, to the forefront some recognition to some of the work that State Senator Sarah Anthony is doing in the legislature. She's working really hard as the Chair of the Appropriations Committee to craft a budget, over $80 billion budget for the entire state of Michigan, but what she's not forgetting is where she comes from, and she's working to ensure that she's fighting for resources for this community that has been overlooked by the legislature for far too many years. And I just wanted to use this opportunity to thank you for bringing this forward, but also thank Senator Anthony and Representative Whitwer for the work they're doing in legislature for, on behalf of our community.
Thank you. Um, with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Spatafor.
I see your resolution, Cost, and raise you two. Um, so, tonight, we have before us a couple appeals for business licenses, and I gotta tell you, um, six years here, I'd never seen that, and, uh, Ms. Boak says that in her 11 years, she's never seen it, and Mr. Swope tells me in 17 years, he's never seen these, these types of licenses.
And I will tell you, for 23 years, they're almost 24, I've never seen it.
All right, so, these are the first of the two. So if you've never seen them, you're here for history, folks. Um, they're actually, uh, transient merchant licenses, and we've asked for some more information from LPD when we, when this comes back to committee. We're just setting the public hearing tonight for July 10th. Um, this is an appeal for the denial for, uh, DeAndre Thomas for a transient merchant license. Um, I move the resolution.
And again, this is for a public hearing on the 10th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Uh, this is the same, uh, another public hearing for an appeal for a transient merchant license. This one for Eugenio Trujillo. Um, I would move denial, I'm sorry, move to set the public hearing for July 10th, 2023.
All right, we have a motion, um, to set the public hearing. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to the order of ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearings. Councilmember Hussein introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending chapter 1460.01 subsection M in the International Property Maintenance Code adopted by reference to clarify the parties responsible for prohibiting the occupancy and maintaining the vacancy of placarded equipment and structures. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
All right, so very quickly, uh, this, this just does a, a couple things. This was actually brought forth by law. Uh, so it clarifies responsibility, um, and it kind of enhances this tool for law, uh, in terms of enforcement against property owners that are allowing, uh, for placarded properties to be, uh, inhabited. And then the other piece in there, uh, maybe less significant, but still significant, um, is it clarifies that, uh, any work that is done after 5:00 or on the weekends, uh, with regards to placarded dwellings, to bring them back up to code, uh, that, uh, permission has to actually be given in writing. Uh, so what we're doing tonight is actually introducing this and setting it public. So what we're doing tonight is actually introducing this and setting a public hearing for July 10th. So with that said, I'd move the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion before us. All those in favor for setting the public hearing for the 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan re-adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. It's read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, sorry. We are, well, we've been doing this since we had a fortunate situation back in 2017, you might recall. And so on annual basis, beginning in 2018, we have re-adopted our ordinances to ensure that we have no lapse or expiration of ordinances. So with that being said, I would move for the re-adopting of the codified ordinances.
All right, you have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Would you like immediate effect?
I would move for immediate effect.
You have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, our next, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z42023, six vacant lots along the west side of the 3300 block of the unimproved North Large Street, right of way from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to SC Suburban Commercial. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have before us is a request to rezone six vacant parcels located on an unimproved section of North Large Street from R-3 Suburban Detached Residential to S-C Suburban Commercial. The purpose of the rezone is to permit the properties, to permit, permit the use of the properties for the storage of equipment and materials related to the fence, to the fence contracting business at 3323 Northeast Street. The applicant has also, as part of this, requested that the city vacate the unimproved section of North Large Street located east of and between the subject properties and the properties that have frontage along Northeast Street. On, at the April 4th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the rezone. Let's see. And our planning department has also recommended denial. Let's see. Staff, yeah, staff recommends denial. So, Madam President, I would move this for final passage, and then I'd like to comment.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Go ahead, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I really find this disturbing, and I don't know how this got to us with recommendations by the Planning Commission and other folks for denial, particularly when we're talking about vacation of a street. And I totally sympathize with your situation. I, I, I don't know if you spoke to anybody in planning, or I just, I just, I'm just really kind of baffled that, you know, this got all the way here, and there wasn't any counseling to this, if, or if there was, that, you know, the rezoning and the vacation of a road is not something that we do. And so I, I, I'm really, I'm really kind of confused with this. You know, we've, our, our, our staff people have recommended denial of this and denial of the road vacation. And so I don't, you know, I, I don't know how we get past that. I sympathize with him that he wants to expand his business, but, you know, this is denial by our planning department and the Planning Commission. So that's, that's what I'm going to say on that.
And, and my question would be, and probably goes to the City Attorney's Office. I'm understanding that the vacation is not something that comes to council. That was decided between the public service and, and the mayor's office. Is that correct? I mean, we keep hearing this vacation, and actually, it's not an action that council can take up.
So there are two things that are separate tracks.
Correct.
The applicant requested vacation of a right of way and also requested rezoning of several parcels. By state law and also by our ordinance, which comports with state law, an application for a rezone must be heard by city council.
Correct.
And so that's what's up in front of council.
I've got that.
And so that's how that came up. Even if the administration, the zoning administrator and the Planning Commission all think that it should not go forward, right, it still has to come to be voted upon. Vacation, if the administration wants or agrees with the request to vacate, and in this instance, the zoning administrator did not agree with that, or could not recommend that, and the Planning Commission also heard it and recommended against vacation of that right of way, that's not a thing that counts, is required by law for council to be heard. However, if they did agree that the vacation should occur, that would require council's vote to take effect.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Spitzley.
Well, thank you, Madam President. So was the vacation, so the vacation has been denied.
So, well, no vacation, no resolution to vacate that right of way is in front of council at this time. So the request was made, but nobody, nobody within the administration put forward a resolution to vacate because they don't recommend it.
So, okay, so if, if, if the rezoning is approved and the vacation is denied, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So, I mean, you, it's a yes or no, is the vacation was not recommended or approved by, by the zoning administration, the administration or whomever?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need, that's what I need to know.
There's no, there's no vacation to be considered or to take effect. The rezoning could still be, you could still vote to approve the rezone if you wanted, and those parcels would be rezoned, independent of the vacation.
Okay, so, yes, Councilmember.
I, I think the question, correct me if I'm wrong, I read this a few weeks back.
Yeah.
But I thought the staff report said that this could not be rezoned without a, a successful Act 33 and a vacation of that public right of way. Is that not true?
I mean.
Meaning, meaning we could rezone it, but it would not necessarily, it, it wouldn't be activated until the public right of way was actually, that, that's the way the staff report read.
I, I'll review the staff report. I think the, it creates a very bizarre zoning configuration if the rezone is approved and the vacation is not approved. Because then you've got, you've got parcels that cross zone adjoining residential.
Right.
With, and, and not adjoining similarly zoned parcels.
Just, just really quickly, for me, it, it, that's important, right? It's an important aspect to, to make sure that we're clear on. But for me, this was going to be a no vote anyway, and I'm going to tell you why. First of all, Planning Commission, now the Commission, right, obviously is not recommending approval. Our own zoning administrator is not recommending approval. This would be inconsistent. I mean, when we look at rezones, we have to apply, I know people hate the word fidelity up here, but we have to apply with some measure fidelity in terms of how we look at these. And it would be inconsistent with land use. It would be inconsistent with surrounding zoning. It certainly is not consistent with our design Lansing master plan. And frankly, I think this area, they call for, it calls for, I should say, low densial, low density residential. And with the conversations that we have had in terms of the need for more housing, variety of housing, I don't know why we would be wanting to take contiguous land like this and rezone it to, to S, what is it, R3 Suburban Commercial. So in any event, this would be a no for me. The other piece is that we have an applicant that has been violating our ordinances by, by using this almost in a non-conforming way, which is a problem. And then beyond that, I still struggle with the fact that this is a contractor with the City of Lansing, and they are currently violating our ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, other comments?
I will, I will just say this, I will just end it here, is that I think that however way we, we vote, that the applicant deserves some clarity. And, you know, you know, everybody deserves clarity. And I, and I question whether or not this, this person, this applicant, has received clarity on this process. Heck, I don't even know, you know, I didn't even know, and I had to ask questions. And so that's all I'm saying, is that it's just unfortunate that, you know, it's, it just seems like a confusing thing all around. And it's just, I, I, it's messy, so I'll, I'll leave it there. I mean, if you can't, if, if the vacation has been denied, I don't know, it's messy, so I'm done with that. Thank you.
Any other comments? I will also not be supporting this. I believe in the consistency of the neighborhood and what needs to be looked at. And I think we heard from neighbors as well, and part of rezoning is to take into effect how it will affect the adjoining properties. And so I will not be supporting this either. So unless there's other comments, roll call.
On adoption of the rezoning ordinance, Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
Three yays, four nays, the ordinance is not adopted.
Okay.
And that takes us to item 23, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to provide for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z52023, 1906 East Miller and the vacant parcel at the southwest corner of East Miller Road and Aurelius Road from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to RMX Residential Mix. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, just give me a quick minute here.
That's okay.
This is a request to rezone 1906 East Miller Road and the adjoining parcel of land at the southwest corner of East Miller Road and Aurelius Road from R-3 Suburban Detached Residential to RMX Mixed Residential. The purpose of the rezone is to permit a multi-unit residential development consisting of duplexes and detached, single-family dwellings. Oh, I, and attached, single, I'm sorry, single-family dwellings. All of the units will be rental units. This has been recommended by our Planning Commission for approval. The finding of the fact as described in this staff report supported positive recommendation for the requested zoning. And with that, I will move the ordinance for final passage.
Right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, we have a roll call, please.
Certainly on adoption of the rezoning ordinance, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And that takes us to item 24, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending chapter 1060, section 1060.08 and section 1060.99 to clarify abatement and enforcement penalties. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Public Safety and is on the order of immediate passage.
And that's Councilmember Hussein.
And we spoke to this earlier during the public hearing. I don't think there's anything left to be said. So with that being said, I would move the passage of the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion before us. Roll call.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Six yays, one nay, the ordinance is adopted.
We have a question from Councilmember.
Madam President, I meant to say no, I can move to reconsider, or can the clerk change my vote to no? Which is more appropriate under rule.
Pardon?
He wanted to vote.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, so five to, five to two, the ordinance is adopted.
Immediate effect?
So moved.
We're, a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor of immediate effect, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Pose.
Okay, six, one. Okay.
Okay. We are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a yellow form, if you have not already, in the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move that, I'm sorry, all items be considered as read and full, and that appropriate referrals be made by you, President Wood.
You have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, from the city clerk, we have minutes of boards, minutes of boards and commissions.
Please on file.
Executive Directive 23-1, Juneteenth as a City of Lansing holiday.
Please on file.
And Executive Directive 202302, Citizen Complaint Oversight Committee and Commission Investigator.
Committee of the Whole.
And the Board of Order Light Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and the capital forecast for several fiscal years.
Committee of the Whole of an, and internal auditor.
From the mayor, we have a grant acceptance, three grant acceptances, one for Home Investment Partnership Program for homelessness prevention, one for Michigan State Housing Development Authority Shelter Diversion Pilot, and one for Home ARP Funds for Housing Navigation Program.
Those all go to Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And we have two items relative to Z72023, rezoning 3712 South Cedar.
And those will go to Development and Planning.
And lot split 10 of 23, 2024, Feral Street.
That'll go to Development and Planning.
And we have setting a public hearing on the Oprah District, as well, as the next item is the Oprah Certificate, both for homes on Holmes LLC at 230 South Holmes Street.
And those will both go to Development and Planning.
The appointment of Jesus Flores to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
And that will go to Development and Planning.
And the appointment of P. Shane Muchmore to the Planning Commission.
That go to Development and Planning.
The appointment of Tracy Reel to the Local Development Finance Authority.
That will go to Development and Planning.
Appointment of Ben Corman to the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Currently, that will be tabled until we get the additional information from the administration. And the laser fish was not the resume, so we need to make sure that we have that. And then it, once that information is given to us, and it will move on to Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Grant acceptance, priority health and national fitness campaign grant for Parks and Recreation Department.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And items from Council President Wood, two items relative to an ordinance for council chambers and conference room.
And that will go to the City Attorney and Committee of the Whole.
And two items relative to these, itemized the chief strategy officer duties.
And that will go to the City Attorney and Committee of the Whole.
And two items relative to collection bin, the collection bin ordinance relative to city owned property.
And that will go to City Attorney and the Public Safety.
Communications and petitions, notice from the Liquor Control Commission, request to transfer liquor license from Bonnies Inc. to 637 East Michigan Avenue.
That will go to City Operations.
Claim appeal, trade. Claim appeal, Trey Matidi for trash fees at 500 West Willow.
And that's City Operations.
Claim appeal, Siligus, Siligus LLC for trash fees at 1506 Robertson.
City Operations.
And claim appeal for Raheem Alakale for trash fees at 1611 Lansing Avenue.
And that will be City Operations.
Motion of excused absence.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move that we excuse Councilman Garza from tonight's proceedings.
You have a motion before us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Remarks by council members.
Are there any council member comments? Okay, seeing none.
Remarks by the executive assistant to the mayor.
No comments. Okay, thank you.
Then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. The first speaker is Vial Trias, followed by Mitch Rice. And each speaker will have three minutes, up to three minutes, to address the council on city government matters.
Good evening, Madam Secretary. How you doing? It's nice. First off, it's just good to see all of you. Praying for all of you, for sure.
Good, thank you.
Secondly, I came down today to just talk about the Parks and Recreation. I know y'all get y'all complaints about everybody that don't do what they're supposed to do. But I was highly impressed with the fact that I called two years ago, understandably, COVID, everything was going on, and naturally, shortage of people. Faithfully, I waited two years, and last week I decided to call, because this tree, if you looked at it, it was going to wipe out everything in front of my house, as well as part of my house. And as a result of that, the next day I called, someone came out. Me, being patient as I am, figured, okay, they'll get around to me when the time is right. So happened, whoever I called at the Parks and Recreation Office heard my cry for how serious this was, as far as this tree falling and destroying all of my landscaping and everything. But the beauty of it was, was the people that came out and did the work, they were awesome. And as a result of those, that crew, I gotta say, there's a lot of things we can say about city workers, but in this particular case, they came out, they did their job, they didn't even take a break. I even gave them water and pop because I thought they were so impressive. And if you seen my yard, you would see that it's detailed all the way to around that tree. Not one limb touched any of those landscaping materials. But I just want to encourage them for a job well done, and the city council, if you all could come up with a way to, like, that group that was out there, that did their job for me, as a homeowner, as an owner, and retired from self-employed, I would say of that crew that was there that day, if you taken all of them and divided them off and put another crew with them, you would get more work out of this, out of this city by those crews. And those people that have waited patiently, like I did, I'd ask them and encourage them to come forward and speak on behalf of those people that have came in, that those, and those people that have came in and really did the work to get those jobs done for them. And lastly, seeing said, I have a question that I haven't came up with an answer. You don't have to answer me, but I'll leave you with it. One of the things I've heard, and I've been a homeowner for over 20 years plus, is one thing I've heard, that the City of Lansing owns all the trees that are close to the streets. I'll leave you with this question. If you own the tree, who owns the stump when the tree is gone? Have a good one.
Thank you. Next, we have Mitch Rice, followed by Stan Shuck.
Thank you. Greetings again to city council members. I have three quick comments. One is related to Agenda Item 32 and 33. That was a request for rezoning. As a current member of the Lansing Board of Zoning Appeals, I have a concern about the rezoning request listed. I support the staff recommendation to deny the rezoning of property at, I believe it's 3712 South Cedar Street. Mr. Zachary Driver, the Commercial Corridor Specialist, correctly states that granting this request would result in, quote, "spot zoning," which is not in the best interest of the city. In fact, if the city council grants this type of rezoning request, it essentially renders educated, experienced, trained staff who plan city land use ineffective. In regards to Fair Chance Housing, again, I'm here before you to keep Fair Chance Housing a priority for our community and the City of Lansing. The formerly incarcerated have all too long had too many historical and arbitrary barriers after serving their time. We need each of you to invest time and influence with the state of Michigan Legislature to pass a Fair Chance Housing Law. I urge each of you to stay up to date and informed on this legislation, and stay active in the process, as I have been. You may meet with our state legislators, attend committee meetings and hearings, email or call key members of the committee. Do not sit idle. I will not go away, so expect me back before you again with this issue. And lastly, in regards to the ethics complaint for, report, and Jeffrey Brown, in my recent review of reports and minutes, I did not see a conclusion on the matter of the alleged ethics violation by Councilmember Jeffrey Brown. I hope that the city council does not ignore or dismiss the reported and city attorney investigated alleged ethics violation by Jeffrey Brown in the past March. From the attorney report, it stated, since Councilmember Brown was not authorized to submit these proposals on behalf of the city, and was not authorized to represent that it was the official position or policy of the city to request funding for these projects, I find that he violated Sections 290.04, Section D, and 290.04, Section I, in this instance. And that was written by Gurri G. Chashital Esquire.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening, Stan Shuck. I sent some of you a video from Haslett. I got contacted by a gentleman out there that actually sued the township, or whoever it was that was in charge of their chip ceiling, same company. They actually had to sue him, got vehicle damage through the vehicles in the neighborhood as, as well. But the video that I sent you, it's Piccadilly Circle, it's right across the street from the mall. They actually had to come back and road a mill, that mess up, so they can come back and blacktop it, put a top on it to, to fix it. And that's really one of the only fixes. But since Andy's been down here a couple of times, there's been public service meetings, and still, no response as to when are those contractors coming. He said on the news, he was in close contact with them, they'd be out, and they'd at least assess the damage and see what they were gonna do. When is that gonna happen? Has it happened? What was involved with the conversations? What's the cost involved? You know, this, this isn't going away. You know, this affects, you know, probably everybody up there's got people in their ward that this affects. I also sent you a video of a good chip ceiling job and what it should look like. So, you know, don't, I hope, I hope we're not dropping the ball on this. This needs to be followed up. You know, whether it's, you know, it takes the media, again, to get some, get some movement or what, whatever. But, but it needs to be taken care of. Also, like the gentleman was talking about the forestry crew, you know, we used to have 18 of those dedicated employees on the forestry crew. And then, you know, after the ice storm, we turned around and hired an out-of-state, 20 million bucks, out-of-state tree trim hackers, as I'm sure most of you have heard, as they go through the city hacking our trees up. You know, we could have restaffed and retooled, and you'd have had people that were dedicated just like them, that worked, lived, and played in Lansing, and, and have pride in their community. When you get companies from outside, there is none of that. And that's when you end up with chip ceiling like, man, that's when you end up with the trees hacked like that, that's when you end up with the mowing like it is, just mow over the paper, you know, don't worry about it, just mow, it'll go in the wind. Also, like to report on your sweepers. You are down to one sweeper right now, and that sweeper is even broken, and they're waiting on parts. But they're still using it, they're trying to get something done. But you folks need to look in to some maintenance equipment, and, you know, what, what's going on with it. You've got obligations. Those are, those are services that are paid for. You told the people in this city, you pay these taxes, this is what we're gonna do for you. It's time that you do some of that.
Thank you. Next, thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Jody Washington.
So, I'm going to be speaking here right now for, because of problems I have with the city. I've grown up in the City of Lansing, thinking it's a, one of the greatest, one of the, quote, "greatest places to live." However, seeing all these problems at the city, honestly, it just broke a lot of my childhood mindset. And just seeing, like, what has been going on, particularly the red tag issue. There have been, depending on who you ask, there could be up to like 600 or 1,200 properties that were red tagged, depending on if you consider that one apartment property, multiple properties, considering the amount of people who live there. And the fact of the matter is, land, many landlords have neglected their properties for many, many years, and there seriously needs to be a serious litmus test for those who want to become landlords. I'll go into more detail about this during the candidate forum on Thursday at SWAC, so you can have a better grasp of what my opinion on this is. But suffice to say, there seriously does need to be a litmus test, and building safety, whatever does the whole, or whatever Lansing's equivalent is, also needs to inspect properties like every one to two years, or half a year or something, give or take, so that these properties are maintained well enough, and so that we don't end up in having any more properties that get red tagged than we do now. Also, the fact that the Moores Park Pool, a historic pool, has been in disrepair, and only now has it actually been put forth, and this shows, like, other properties have been in disrepair. I mean, currently, City Hall, I mean, the fact that the doors right there are missing to the well showcases just how outdated a lot of our structure in our buildings are. We've been letting a lot of these building infrastructures deteriorate over these years without much renovation, and there needs to be proper ones for that. And same goes for a lot of those red-tagged properties. That's all I feel I need to say about the issue, and I shall yield the last 10 or so seconds of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Jody Washington.
Thank you, Jody Washington, East Side. I'm not going to cry, I have a goiter, so that affects my voice. So having said that, I was not able to come to the last council meeting, so I am going to address this issue tonight. You can only imagine my surprise when I got the email from Mayor Andy Shore asking me to contribute to his leadership fund, because there are two, there are two seats up for grabs, and he needs his vision brought forward, and he'd like to pay for some of their campaigning, seriously. You know, I will never forget that Abraham Lincoln said in his Gettysburg Address, "To honor the soldiers that died for democracy, for all people." We have a government of the people, by the people, for the people, not a government of Andy Shore, for Andy Shore, by Andy Shore. I am so appalled that any mayor or anyone else would use their political seat to design their own PAC for their own candidates. I cannot believe this is legal, and if it is, it certainly is not ethical. He said, when I approached this subject last year, about him endorsing people, that the governor does it, the president does it, so he can do it. Alrighty, we are a small town of 112,648 people. We are not the country, we are not the state. And I highly doubt that Governor Whitmer or President Biden has their own leadership fund for them to campaign for and give money to candidates. We had a mayor that stacked council. I sat on council during those times. It causes divisiveness, infighting, and chaos. The people of this city are bright enough and intelligent enough to decide who they would like to vote for. This is our city, not any mayor's city. And I resent the fact that any mayor would be so, have so much hubris that they think their vision is the only vision. I learned a long time ago, if you cannot convince a group that something is a good idea, perhaps it's not a good idea. It's okay, everything doesn't have to be your way. As far as I know, all the candidates have been keeping it clean. But I would, to the new people running, warn you to not be a part of this, because it's not good for you, and it's not good for the mayor, because chances are, both of his candidates will not win, and he's going to have to work with somebody he didn't pay for and endorse.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
We want to wish everyone a happy Fourth and safe Fourth of July, because our next meeting won't be until July 10. So with that, we are adjourned.